Lawson.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Coots.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, we'll move down to number 3.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Anderson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Sure. Please join me on the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to number four, Public Comment. Is there, did you want to read that letter now, Lisa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will read the opening announcement and then we can move to Public Comment. Good afternoon and thank you for joining us. Due to the social distancing requirements enacted in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Sparks City Council meetings will be hosted in this virtual setting until further notice. The safety of Sparks residents, employees, and elected officials are important to us, and we appreciate your patience as we journey through this virtual meeting together. The City of Sparks uses Zoom, a third-party app for its virtual meetings, and does not control its technical specifications or requirements. Your ability to participate in public comment during this meeting may be impacted by factors like the type of device you use, the strength of your internet or cellular signal, and the company that provides your internet or cellular service. The City of Sparks is not responsible if you are not able to participate in a meeting through Zoom due to these or any other factors. For those watching and listening from home, general public comment will be announced for items 4 and 12.1. If you wish to speak during general public comment, you will need to call in using the phone number or join via the meeting link provided on the City Council agenda. Public comment will not be permitted on social media outlets. All participants will be muted upon entry to the meeting. If you would like to speak during public comment items, press *9 from your telephone or raise your hand on your computer or tablet when prompted. You will be called upon to speak one at a time by your name or telephone number you are calling from. Please be listening for the clerk to read off your name or your phone number. No video callers will be admitted to the meeting. When you are called on to speak for public comment, state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will have three minutes. Please remember, any comments or questions cannot be addressed or answered by the council if the topics have not been agendized. Any person who disrupts the meeting to the extent that it is disorderly conduct will be removed from the meeting. Thank you again for joining us.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, well, Bob, the public comment, is there anybody out in the audience wishing to speak?
So I will look for people who are raising their hands, press *9 from your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. Give him just one more minute, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing any raised hands. I do have six emailed-in public comments.
Okay.
So I will go ahead and move on to those. The first email is from Betsy Jesse, and it states, "Purchasing new police equipment, on the radar and getting attention. Really hope they reconsider these actions based on current events and the need to improve police behavior and reputation." The next public comment is from Ahmad Hawa. It says, "Hello, my name is," I apologize, it's Hawa Ahmad. "My name is Hawa Ahmad, and I am a concerned citizen who emailed all of you on June 7, 2020, and only received a punt to Chief Kroll, who is planning on going on vacation during this very troubled time. I am looking forward to setting up a meeting with the chief to discuss data collection and training practices. However, it has come to my attention that the City of Sparks would like to purchase two additional police vehicles. Prior to this happening, it is imperative that the City of Sparks release the cost of the damages to the police officer's vehicle from the June 5, 2020 incident, and whether insurance reimburse those costs. Additionally, are these cars meant to be procedural replacements based on driving? If so, why is this not more transparent? The actions taken by this City Council have shown that transparency is not a priority. Instead, I would like to know how the council is allowed to spend funds from the FY 2020 Federal Drug Orfitter Fund, and whether they can be used for training." The next public comment is from Kyle Young, says, "Good afternoon. I am a local Sparks resident, and I'd like to submit comment for today's City Council meeting regarding item 8.4. I do not support the City of Sparks purchasing two additional police department vehicles at a cost of $114,324.50. Given the state of police brutality and racial injustice plaguing our nation right now, it is absolutely absurd to spend this money on additional police vehicles. The $114,324.50 and the monies in the FY 2020 Federal Drug Orfitter Fund should be spent on making this community strong and just. I, a white male, should not direct you where to spend this money. Contact our local chapter of the NAACP and ask them how to best spend the money. Reach them at 775-322-2992, or info@renosparksnacp.org." Kyle Young. The next comment is from Caitlin Young. "City of Sparks City Council members, I am a local resident, and I'd like to submit a comment for today's City Council meeting regarding item 8.4. I do not support the City of Sparks purchasing two additional police department vehicles at a cost of $114,324.50. Given the state of police brutality and racial injustice plaguing our nation right now, it is absolutely absurd to spend this money on additional police vehicles. The $114,324.50 and the monies in the FY 2020 Federal Drug Orfitter Fund should be spent on making this community strong and just. I, a white female, should not direct you where to spend this money. Contact our local chapter of the NAACP and ask them how to best spend the money. Reach them at 775-322-2992, or info@renosparksnacp.org. All my best, Caitlin Young." The next public comment is from Daniel Purdy, and it says, "Daniel Purdy, brother of Thomas Purdy. You are supposed to represent the community, and all you do is represent your political interests. It is time for you to take responsibility, stand up and do your job. You must hold all accountable for police brutality. My brother was at the Pepper Mill Casino. They requested an ambulance. The police showed up and hogtied my brother for 45 minutes. If he was brought into the hospital, he would be alive today. I firmly believe it is lack of training and education, or just plain ignorance to human life. But I believe you will do nothing. It's back the blue until I have to you to rather pay all lawsuits to get rid of dirty cops is the business to the taxpayer." The last public comment is from Anne Marie Grant. And it says, "Anne Marie Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy, hogtied Reno PD for 40 minutes during a mental health crisis and executed by the Department of Justice, 10/4/2015. Your local Sparks PD said Reno Police did nothing wrong when they hogtied my brother for 40 minutes, even though every page of the device manual says 'never use' to hogtie a human being. My nonviolent or aggressive brother was murdered. I don't want you to imagine the torture and terror my brother experienced. Instead, I want you to imagine it was your loved one, a son, daughter, sister. You would want to see changes with law enforcement, especially when five men in this county have died from positional asphyxiation at the hands of police. Christopher TomTom was executed by Sparks PD 10/15/2016, after they investigated others that Sparks PD goes and kills another community member in the same way. I've noticed Agenda Item 8.4 is approving nearly all of the Federal Drug Enforcement Orfitter Fund to buy two new police vehicles. This money could be far better spent. Perhaps like training the officers at Sparks PD not to shoot to kill. I saw the video of Rolando Bruswell shooting Kathy Rolando point a gun at the officers as they claim. Both officers were wearing body cams. Both videos should be released. The community still waits for the footage from when 18-year-old Micah Lee was shot by Sparks Police and the names of those officers. There is still hope for none of you to be released. If you aren't willing to reduce funding to the police and invest in resources, none of you deserve to keep the seat you hold. Thank you, Anne Marie Grant." And that is the end of the emailed public comments.
We've got a hand up now.
So, looks like the next public comment will be from Vera Miller. Vera, I have unmuted your line. You will need to unmute yourself, and please state your name for the record and begin speaking.
Hi, sorry about that. I was confused about the raised hand thing. My name is Vera Miller, and I am commenting specifically on Agenda Item 8.4, and I am urging council not to purchase any additional police vehicles. We should spend this, like, $115,000 on affordable housing or mental health services. I'm also here just to talk about Makaiya Lee. I'm urging y'all to put pressure on Sparks PD to release the footage, and like, put pressure on our DA to also expedite the case. And that is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
And I'm not seeing any additional hands at this time. I'm not seeing any additional hands at this time.
Mr. Mayor, you appear to be muted, sir. I think you're muted, Ron.
Okay, 5.1, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion?
Ron, this is Christopher Dare.
Okay, Christopher?
Could we move 9.13 to right as we begin, so I can hear through that?
Sure. We're looking for a second? All seconded that? Here, we have a motion from Dare and a second from Mr. Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, well, 6.1, consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for June 8, 2020. Any changes, corrections? Not seeing any, looking for a motion?
Move to approve, Abbott.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Abbott.
Second, Bybee.
And we have a second from Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, announce 7.1. We'll do 13, or 9:13 after the announcements. 7:1 and 7:2, Boards and Commissions vacancy announcements. Mr. Coots?
Mayor Smith, Mayor's of Council, for the record, Neil Coots, your city manager, here with two announcements as advertised. The first one is for an alternate position for Ward 4 on the Sparks Senior Citizens Advisory Board. It is to fill a partial term that runs through November 4 of 2022. Applicants must be Sparks residents, preferably both live in Ward 4 and be over the age of 55, though neither of those is a requirement, but living within the city is. Applications for that vacancy will be accepted through 5:00 PM on Friday, June 26 this year. The second position, 7.2, is for the Sierra Arts Foundation Board of Trustees. We have a single vacancy there for a one-year term, ending August 13, 2021. Applicants must be Sparks residents, and for that position, we will accept applications through Friday, July 17, 2020. Anyone interested in serving on any committee should fill out a community service application available from the city clerk's office or available at the city's website at www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board Commission or Committee, fill out the form, and hit submit. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Coots. Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull one? Okay, looking for a motion?
Move to approve, approve the consent items. Shoot, let me get to it. 8.1 through 8.6.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Lawson. Look for a second.
And Abbott.
Okay, we have a motion from Lawson, a second from Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, and now we'll move to 9.13. Review and possible direction to the city manager regarding the use of $402,633 of supplemental community development block grant funding allocated to the City of Sparks in a coronavirus ad. Doug? Oh, I'm sorry, that's Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I could go by Doug if that helps out the team.
I've called you a few different names before. As long as you answer.
That's one of the better ones. Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Sparks City Council, Jim Rundell, Doug Rundell, here to present on item 9.13. Well, Mr. Mayor, I come to you with some good news today. And that's how I'll start my presentation. I'm going to share my screen now so you can see my PowerPoint. Can you see that, Mr. Mayor?
I can.
As I said, I come to the City Council and the mayor with some good news today. The city was awarded $402,000 of supplemental community development block grant money, which is what we also refer to as CDBG, through the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act, known as the CARES Act. And the city can use this money to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the COVID-19 emergency. Staff had, and I say "had," past tense, had identified four ways this money could be spent. One of them, public service activities. This classification would be expenses the City of Sparks is already occurring in conjunction with the City of Reno and Washoe County to isolate those with COVID-19 or those suspected of having COVID-19. These may include group, this includes the group facilities such as the WellCare Housing, to socially distance people from those emergency shelters. An example of the emergency shelters are the one at the Reno Events Center. The second component we had identified was buildings and improvements. This grouping could use funds to isolate COVID-19 individuals or those suspected of having COVID-19 to shelter homeless people, homeless persons, based on social distancing guidelines. This could include, for example, improving an alternative facility to the supplemental community assistance center after sheltering operation ceases at the Reno Events Center, or to provide temporary housing, such as what we're calling the Edison Trailers. The third component, emergency rental housing assistance, would provide the City Council the ability to direct the city manager toward rental assistance, toward identifying components rental assistance for those in need. And if that's something, Mr. Mayor, that the council desired, staff recommends that the City Council direct the city manager to identify an appropriate and willing third-party agency to review and distribute those rental assistance funds. The fourth category staff identified was provide grants or loans to create jobs related to, or products or services needed to respond to this pandemic. This could be manufacturing medical supplies, retaining jobs held by low and moderate income persons that otherwise had lost their job due to the social distancing requirements. Again, similar to number three, should the council desire to provide business assistance, staff recommends that the City Council direct the city manager to identify a third party who's appropriate and willing to distribute, to receive and then distribute those funds. Now, post the staff report's submittal that the City Council may have already reviewed, after staff had put that into the system, the state identified that they were going to provide approximately $19 million to the City of Sparks to spend toward COVID-related expenses. And this is not CDBG money. This is not community development block grant money. So staff's recommendation was, again, was, prior to the city staff becoming aware of this $19 million from the state, was to allocate $302,000 toward public service activities, and then also $100,000 for building and facilities. Now that the city may be able to recover costs associated with public service activities and buildings and facilities with the state money, our recommendation is not the same as it once was. So the new direction toward four possibilities to spare, to spend on the CARES allocation. With the state awarding that money, the City Council may not want to direct CDBG funding to business assistance or emergency rental housing. Excuse me, I said "may not." Let me make that clear. May want to direct CDBG funding to business assistance or emergency rental assistance. With that type of direction, the City Council would direct the city manager to file a substantial amendment to HUD and identify a third party to identify an appropriate and willing agency to receive and distribute that rental assistance. And again, we would ask that you ask the city manager to provide for that amendment, that substantial amendment, and look for a third party, and then ultimately bring back an agreement between that third party and the City of Sparks. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, Jim, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Bybee?
So, Jim, with the new direction, if we looked at rental assistance and business assistance, that's only the $402,000 CDBG funds we're talking about, not the $19 million, which is separate CARES funding, correct?
Correct.
So, the reason we would look at that is because the $19 million we can use towards the first two needs that we have for the buildings and for the other two categories, the public facilities, public services, would come out of the $19 million, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, as I outlined in my presentation, Councilwoman Bybee. I don't know that it was first and second, but it may have been, yes. But to your direction, that is correct. We can utilize that $19 million toward what we originally were going to recommend the council's ended on.
Okay, and so we'd be just looking at $402,000 for either one or both of those categories? It would be up to us? The rental assistance and the business assistance?
Correct, yes. It would be whichever the council ultimately moves toward would be. You could move toward one of those, you could move toward both of those, but that would be the limit, the $402,000. And then also, we would be looking for a third party to help us administer that. And of course, we would have to provide an amendment to HUD for them to understand what we're going to do with the money.
Okay, would we still have to have public comment? A public comment period on that CDBG funding from CARES?
On a substantial amendment, I believe we do. We would work that into the noticing component that we would put in the newspaper. Armando might be able to verify that what I've said is correct, but that is what we tend to do. We provide a public comment period once we start to agendize it for a City Council meeting. We put that in the Reno Gazette-Journal.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dare?
Yes, thank you so much, Jim. We appreciate it, Mr. Rundell, or Doug Rundell, I should say. And my question is, is it one of those things that I think kind of our motion now is just to really go get more information. And I like the idea of having, splitting it up to those two different areas, because they both serve our population in a different way and hit a different need. But could, so right now, really, you're just asking us to give direction to city manager, and then come back and bring us, but I like the idea of having probably multiple options, not just one. Is that fair to ask?
Councilman Dare, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to respond?
Sure.
Yes, Councilman Dare, that is essentially what staff is requesting, which is different than when we originally composed the staff report, but the circumstances changed, and now we have an opportunity, and I think the most appropriate, my opinion, most appropriate is the council has this opportunity to direct the city manager inside of those parameters we outlined in the presentation.
So, Jim? I'm sorry, Christopher, go ahead.
I was gonna say, good. I'm ready to make a motion. Well, I don't have it in front of me. I guess somebody else will make a motion, but I'm ready to move forward. Thank you for your answers.
I wonder if I can jump in here. Jim, do you have a recommended revised motion, given that the staff report and what we're doing here now are a little different?
I think I can compose one on the fly. If I understand, the sentiment of the council is to look at two of the four that we outlined in the presentation. Does that seem to be the consensus?
I believe so. Would you restate the two, please?
Yes. I believe that the motion would be that the City Council would direct the city manager to file a substantial amendment to HUD and identify a third party, to identify an appropriate and willing third-party agency to assist in rental assistance funds, and provide grants or loans to businesses to create jobs related to products or services needed to respond to this pandemic.
And do we need to put a dollar amount on either one of those things, or we're gonna just have Neil bring that back?
Councilman Lawson, I believe you do not need to put a dollar amount on it, because we are constrained with the amount that CDBG provides. Mr. Coots, do you feel differently?
Well, I would, I don't know that I'm looking for a specific dollar amount, but I would like, I would appreciate hearing, is it, you want a roughly 50-50 split? Do you want three-quarters of it towards rental assistance and one quarter towards business? What's the rough ratio that you think we should be, you know, looking to spend this money in? I would ask for that to be part of your motion.
Council, how do you feel about that?
I was looking, for me, I'm looking at a 2/3, 1/3 more towards rental assistance with the governor's more toward ending July 1. I think that's gonna be more important than anything to keep people in their homes.
I, this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Anderson?
Yeah, I actually agree with what Mr. Lawson just said. I've talked to some constituents in Ward 3 that are not receiving any assistance from the state level, and they're in jeopardy of losing their homes, and they badly need assistance with the housing, the rental assistance. But likewise, the company portion of it, being able to assist them, can help us go further down the road. So I like being able to do both with Mr. Lawson, 2/3, 1/3.
Okay, Mr. Dare?
I was just gonna say, I agree.
Okay, Ms. Bybee? You're muted.
Okay, sorry. I guess the only question I have on the business side of it, it's grants or loans to businesses that would provide jobs that produce services or goods for COVID-19. Do we know that there are businesses in Sparks that are currently doing that? I would hate to allocate the funds and us not have any businesses that are making PPEs or providing jobs related to COVID. Do we know that that's a need in our community? Because this money would be just towards Sparks businesses, correct? Mr. Rundell?
Councilwoman Bybee, I'd like to have Armando be piped in, because I don't know the answer off the top of my head to that one.
Armando? Unmute yourself, Armando.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the City Council, I'm Armando Ornell, Assistant Community Services Director. I think Councilwoman Bybee, Councilwoman Bybee brings up a good point. I think we could broaden this to allow for the grants or loans to be made to either businesses that are providing a product related to fighting the COVID-19 pandemic, or alternatively, to a business in order to or alternatively, uh, to a business in order to, uh, mitigate job losses, uh, related to the, um, economic, um, slowdown and the social distancing requirements that the state has imposed. So if you would broaden it a little bit to allow either of those, uh, activities, uh, then, uh, I think we'd have a little more flexibility.
Thank, thank you, Armando, and, um, obviously, we have a lot of businesses that have been impacted and job losses. Uh, I, and I, I appreciate the expansion. So I would hate to delegate it just to companies that make products and we don't have any companies that do that and we haven't used those funds. So I would appreciate that expansion, um, because I do want to cover businesses as well, but I agree with Councilman Lawson that the rental assistance is probably a higher priority for me. So the two thirds, one third, I support with the expansion on the business, um, grants or loans.
Uh, do, uh, I'll get, I'll get with you in a second, Mr. Abbott, do we need to change that motion? I, I don't think we do, do we?
Well, I, it, it would be helpful to me if, if we could have a restated motion that clarifies the percentages and the clarification on what kinds of businesses we want to apply it to, just, just to kind of clean up this conversation.
Jim, do you want to read that? I, I, you read it before, right?
Yeah, if, if you want to go to, uh, Councilman Abbott, maybe I can type one up and put it on the screen.
Okay, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, uh, so I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, on the substantial amendment, what are we, you know, timings? You know, time is coming up, what, how quick do you think we can get this ball rolling it? Um, after today? To get that amendment through and get something going for our residents and businesses?
Well, uh, Councilman Abbott, we would begin to work on it right away, uh, but depending on the motion to identify a third party, uh, that may, it may take us a little bit of time. Uh, Armando, can you speak further to that?
Councilman Abbott, uh, I believe we can, uh, file the motion, I'm sorry, the substantial amendment, uh, with, uh, general enough language to allow for, for both activities. Uh, it's, it is, as, as Mr. Rundle said, going to take some time for us to identify an appropriate, uh, third party, uh, who was willing to serve as a sub recipient for these, uh, CDBG COVID funds. Um, you know, that sub recipient will have, has to be willing to comply with all the requirements of the CDBG program. Uh, and the city, you know, would ultimately, uh, monitor them for compliance with the requirements of the CDBG program. So, you know, that, that, that will take some, some time and effort. Uh, but I believe we can file the substantial amendment with, uh, you know, probably, probably by the end of the month with enough latitude, uh, to, to cover what we're anticipating. Uh, what we understand the council is, is requesting that we do with these dollars.
I got you. And I think just going out of name, I don't know if United Way in Northern Nevada, I know they do a little stuff, I don't know if they would be able to be a, a third party or not, but, um, also, you know, looking forward, whatever we get to, is it possible we have, have a presentation here? So we're, we all know how people can apply, so our public knows how they can apply, is that possible down the road? Is that something you want me to bring up during public council comments or?
Well, I, I cer- certainly, uh, I would imagine that the, the city manager would, would ask us to, uh, provide you a presentation, uh, about whatever it is that we're proposing to do in terms of the specific organizations and the programs that they would be, uh, utilizing these dollars for.
Perfect, and then the last one, uh, on our two thirds, one thirds, I, I support it as well. But is it possible, if, you know, if we don't have any businesses applying, that we're able to take some of that money and funnel it over to the rental system? Is that too vague or?
I, I think that there's, uh, there's two options to, first, to how to proceed in that regard, uh, Councilman Abbott. As I noted, um, you know, uh, whoever the sub recipients for these funds are going to be, are gonna have to comply with all the CDBG requirements. Uh, it is possible that, um, we may not find a, a, a sub recipient for one or both of these activities. Uh, in which case, um, you know, you could either ask the city manager to say, uh, you know, we've, we've found, uh, a, a sub recipient to administer, you know, either the rental assistance or the, or the business assistance programs, but not for the other. Uh, do you want us to shift the dollars to, to the, to the other activity, or do you want us to keep looking? Uh, and so I, I, that, that's possible, I think, through an update, um, to the manager.
Got you, thank you, I'm good.
Would, would it help if our motion was and/or if we had funding to the rental assistance and/or the business assistance? Or is that legally, does that, is that sound, or Mr. Manager, is that too vague?
How about Chip?
You know, Mr. Mayor, this is Chip Adams, your city attorney. Let's keep in mind that this particular agenda item today is somewhat executory in nature, that is, you're just providing direction to the city manager as to how you would like to see these funds distributed. The ultimate decision will come with, uh, a formal city council action. So what your city manager is going to try and do is, is, uh, provide you with a breakdown. But nothing will be, will be in stone. In other words, whatever the city manager provides you with today, you can always change later on. So I think that, that for purposes of this agenda item and simply providing direction to the city manager, I, I don't think you have to get so specific with an and or an or. I think that your general consensus, whether that's two thirds to housing assistance and one third to business, uh, it is just that. Take a look at this, Mr. City Manager, uh, tell us your plans. And then down the road, uh, those plans could certainly change and the city council can adopt a completely different direction. So I don't think we have to really specify with any great detail today, uh, the amounts, uh, or the percentages of funds, just a general, general sense provided to the city manager should be sufficient.
Well, I, I think our big concern is that it just doesn't take three or four months to get this money out to people that really do need it, so. Jim, do you have a new motion?
I've attempted to, there's a little bit of discussion, maybe this will work, Mr. Mayor.
Ed, and then you tell me if you, if you're good with it, Ed.
Good.
Is, oh, I have to, I shared my screening correctly, uh, let me try it again. Is it sharing, Mr. Mayor?
It's got your, it's got your motion on the screen.
Okay.
Is that complete now, Jim?
Potentially, depending on the, uh, comments of the council.
Okay, Ed, you want to, um?
I just got a question for Mr. Krutz, if that's enough direction for him, then I'm good with this and I'll read it.
It is, I'm, I'm satisfied.
So I'll, I'll read the, the motion as I direct the city manager to file a substantial amendment to HUD to identify a third party to serve as a sub recipient to administer COVID funds in the amount of approximately two thirds rental assistance and up to one third business assistance, and bring the agreement back to the city council for consideration and possible adoption.
And Ms. Bybee, you, I believe you were the second on that?
Uh, yes, and I will, I will remain the second, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? And could you get that off the screen, Jim?
Yes, sir. Uh, let's see.
Okay, anybody else? Any discussion?
I think we, we need to remind Councilmember Dare to turn his mic back on for purposes of
Okay, he did it. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Thanks, Jim.
Neil, just, just aside, Neil?
Yes, sir.
Talk to W N D D about the business, uh, they do already have a, uh, revolving loan fund, we can specify that they only do it in Sparks.
Okay, we'll make sure we, uh, we have conversation with them. Thank you for the heads up.
You bet. Neil, should, uh, if we know of organizations that might be able to help on the rental assistance side, should we have them contact you?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, nine point one, presentation discussion of possible acceptance of an evaluative framework categorizing core services into functional areas in support of the city's strategic plan to guide budgetary judgments and adjustments in FY twenty one. Are you there, Doug?
Hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Perfect. Um, so back by popular demand, I am Doug Thornley, your Assistant City Manager for Internal Services. And, uh, and what I want to talk to you today about is, um, is, i- i- is how we're going to make adjustments to a budget where we don't yet know exactly what the economic impact of, of a global pandemic event is going to be. When we talk to Jeff and the financial services professionals, we know that C-Tax is gonna take the brunt of the hit. Uh, it's gonna have a commensurate drop in property tax revenue and business license revenue. Uh, and then additional expenses in, in response to, to COVID are all going to come out of the general fund, we think. And so, um, what we're looking at right now is a, is a projected eleven and a half million dollar deficit in the general fund, uh, between fiscal twenty, which is ending here at the end of the month, and fiscal twenty one, which is, which is starting, uh, July first. Um, having a little bit of trouble with my screen at the moment. Um, but what you're looking at, uh, here is, is sort of the budgeted expenditures for fiscal twenty one. And, and you can see that the big purple circle is all funds, and so that's our enterprise funds and our, and our, um, restricted funds plus our general fund. And, and so all in, we were budgeted to spend twen- two hundred twenty-two and a half million dollars, uh, in fiscal twenty one. And of that, seventy-nine million four hundred thousand is, is in the general fund. And so what you can see there is that, um, you know, sort of the big hit being out of the general fund, there's gonna be a disproportionate effect on, on the services that get paid for out of the general fund, uh, than, than all of those things. And so when we started to look at how we might make adjustments, um, you know, we, we thought to ourselves, well, what's the best way to look at that? And we thought that, you know, kind of turning to the strategic plan that's a part of every year's budgeting process was a good place to start. And of course, uh, you'll all recall from the city manager's recommended budget and the budget book, uh, that that includes a, a list of core services. Um, you can see here, one through twenty-six, starting with patrol, going through the Larry D Johnson Center, uh, including grants and city administration and, and, and all manner of services, um, kind of in between, but that's not a complete list of the things that we do as a city. Um, you know, one, one notable, uh, missing service is wastewater treatment, which is, I think, undeniably important. Uh, but it didn't make that list of core services. And so, um, you know, what, what, what we really needed to do was we needed to get to the strategic plan and it's, and it's six goals. As a quick reminder, we're trying to manage growth by focusing on infill development and protecting open spaces and parks. Uh, we're supporting connectivity and transportation and communication systems. We're delivering quality community facilities and services that maintain the safety and well-being of the public. Uh, we're increasing citizen participation in development of policies that reflect the wants and needs of our community. We're ensuring the city's abilities to overcome disruptive change while preserving or rebuilding environmental, social, and economic health. Uh, and we're assuring availability of housing solutions for, for all economic conditions, supporting economic growth in the community with an eye towards financial stability. Um, but what you see here, I think, uh, when you, when you stop to consider it, is that there's no department or function singled out here. Uh, to achieve these six objectives, every, every employee in the city, every department in the city needs to row together. And so what we did, uh, was we kind of went back to the drawing board after, after a couple of false starts and, and attempts at ranking those current services and reorganizing them. And we put them into four buckets. We put them into, uh, these, these four buckets, public safety, infrastructure and facilities, quality of life and administration. The idea here is that having secured a community where residents and businesses feel safe to, to put down roots and, and make investments. Uh, and then we target investments in infrastructure and facilities to support those, those efforts. Uh, both of those things lead pretty, pretty easily and pretty naturally into, into quality of life. And administration, of course, is the hub, it makes sure all the trains run on time, it makes sure we stay compliant, uh, it makes sure we follow all the rules, uh, when we're, when we're achieving these, these other three goals. And so just really quickly, what I'd like to do is, is walk you through the lists that we've made for each of these four conditions and then show you where they shake out in terms of both the, the broad budget and the general fund budget, so that you can start to see what the impact on, on the general fund budget being cut by about fifteen percent might look like. Beginning with public safety, um, I would, I would, uh, complain loudly if I was putting this slide up on the projection screen in the chambers, but I think on your, on your screens it should work, even though it's, uh, very small in some cases. Uh, public safety runs the gamut from dispatch and police and fire and the traditional, the traditional notions of public safety to, you know, the, the building folks who make sure that our building stock is safe and the fire prevention folks who make sure that, uh, our businesses are run safely, uh, that people can get in and out of buildings. We make sure that signals are maintained because it's, it's difficult to go lights and sirens somewhere if the signals aren't functioning. Um, or you have to go lights and sirens somewhere because the signals aren't functioning. So either way, we need to keep the traffic signals working. Uh, and then, of course, wastewater treatment, we put into public safety, it could just as easily be in the next category, which is infrastructure and facilities, that's about a thirty-seven million dollar spend every year. Uh, and so when you, when you get down into the, into the next few slides and you start to see how these investments shake out, I'd, I'd urge you to consider that thirty-seven million dollars could come out of public safety and go into infrastructure and facilities in the blink of an eye, just a matter of opinion there. Um, infrastructure and facilities is a very small part of the general fund, making up only about two point two million dollars all in. Uh, most of this is, is spent out of, uh, enterprise funds and other restricted funds. And like I said, uh, wastewater treatment could just as easily be here. Uh, th- this is your pavement management and maintenance, this is your vehicle fleet, these are your utilities in terms of storm drains and, and sewer, um, and your capital projects, of course, and, and making sure that, that the building stays standing and that the lights stay on uh, at, at the city's various facilities across our community. Uh, quality of life, of course, the print gets even smaller. Um, this is, uh, this is you guys, right? You guys are kind of the guiding, the guide light to, to how we get things done and, and where we prioritize things. This is code enforcement and the planning functions. Our parks and rec programs, whether they're the community centers or the sports complexes, this is tour mark. Uh, this is our, our childcare component, where we, where we do camps and where we do before and after care uh, for schools, and of course redevelopment, where we make investments in the community and, and help assure economic development for businesses and, uh, and provide some housing options in, in downtown and, and in the Audi corridor. And then administration, of course, is, is, is sort of the overhead, right? That's finance, it's human resources. Uh, it's the city clerk, it's the civil lawyers in the city attorney's office, it's IT, it's communications, it's our insurance funds, um, it's debt service, our emergency management. The stuff that, that kind of goes on behind the scenes that, that nobody really cares about, uh, but is, but is integral to the success of the organization. And so again, I just wanted to remind you, um, the general fund is a, is about a third of the, of the all-in budgeted spend for, for the next year. Um, and, and what that means when we, when we break up our four buckets uh, in terms of the, the all-in spend is roughly this. We spend a little more than a hundred million dollars on public safety. Remember that thirty-seven million of that is, is wastewater treatment, so it could just as easily be in that red circle, infrastructure and facilities, where we're spending seventy-one million. Um, so those, those two could, could be reversed pretty quickly. We're at thirty-one million all in for administration and, and we spend just shy of twenty million dollars on quality of life. But remember, public safety and adequate in, investment in infrastructure and facilities, we believe, does beget that, that quality of life. It is, it does provide sort of that foundation for why people choose to live, work, and play in Sparks. In the general fund, those ratios change. We, we spend a bulk of the general fund in public safety. Um, infrastructure and facilities, like I told you, is, is comparatively very small com- component part of the general fund spend. Uh, administration, about half of the administration, uh, commitment comes out of the general fund. Uh, and then quality of life, we've got, we've got just over six million dollars in that quality of life function. Uh, and so what we're trying to do, uh, is sort of highlight that, you know, across the board cuts don't make a whole lot of sense, um, in terms of, of when we're staring down the reduced, reduced, uh, revenue in the general fund. You know, a, a five percent cut in public safety hurts public safety comparatively less than a five percent cut in infrastructure and facilities. And so what we're, what we're looking to do is, is use these buckets, if you will, use these core functions um, of, of admin, public safety, quality of life, and infrastructure and facilities to sort of, uh, identify where adjustments that are least impactful to the, to the mission of the operation, uh, or to the mission of the organization can be made, um, with respect to the strategic plan and, and preserving the foundational services that, that the community relies on and expects from the city of Sparks. And so what we've, what we've tried to do is, is group those things, um, group those And so what we've tried to do is group those things, group those services in a way that will guide us in making the necessary adjustments as we get better numbers from the Department of Taxation and from our financial professionals. So sort of through that lens, what we're looking for today is for you guys to either say, "Well, you've nailed it and done a great job," or, "No, we don't think you've done a particularly good job here, and we would change how some of these things were organized." So what we're looking for is direction on how you would categorize the core services and functional areas of the city through the lens of the strategic plan and, you know, sort of give us your input, your opinions on how you would like to see adjustments evaluated and targeted, should they be necessary. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of bubbles on these screens, and I can bounce back and forth between any of the slides if you have questions.
Okay, questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, Ed Lawson.
Go ahead, Mr. Lawson.
Doug, I think it's important, you know, for the people listening to know that we do not have control over that two hundred twenty-two million of the restricted funds, that that money has to be spent. Yeah, it is two hundred, I have good memory. Of the hundred forty-three million in the restricted funds, we don't have control. It's not like we can say, okay, we're not going to use the cut, patch, and cover fund and move that over to public safety or something else. That has to be spent on that particular item.
That's right. That's why I've got them labeled as restricted funds. Enterprise funds and other funds that fall into that category are restricted for use. So for example, sewer fees get collected, and they have to be used for sewer O and M and for sewer capital projects. They cannot be used in the general fund for a purpose other than what they were collected for. That said, there are certain provisions where, you know, Jeff's going to have a heart attack, so somebody go check on him. But there are provisions where you could take temporary loans from some of those things, but that has not been a fiscal policy that we've pursued as an organization.
So I think it's important, though, to understand this, for the public to understand that we don't have control over that. And borrowing money out of other funds just creates a bigger problem a year or two down the road.
That's absolutely right.
So what the city council has control over is the seventy-nine million in the general fund.
That's correct.
And that's extremely important for the public to understand, is we have very limited movement there.
That is correct, and that's why we stopped breaking down bubbles at the general fund level.
Good job, Ed. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion to...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I was muted.
Oh, okay.
I just had one clarification I wanted from Doug. So today, we're not making any budgetary adjustments. We're simply accepting the framework that categorizes these core services in order for us to... And I like how it's broken down. I think it's really clear. I think it's concise. It kind of really gives us a picture, and I think our residents and people who would check this out can really see where the funds are and how they relate to the strategic plan and how we can best, as we have to make adjustments because of our financial situation right now, how we prioritize and do that so that we're not impacting, you know, hurting any too much. And hopefully, this is a short-term exercise, but my understanding is just simply that: we are just accepting the framework but not making any budgetary adjustments right now.
That's absolutely right. We're asking you to accept the framework or modify the framework in any way that you see fit, so that we are better prepared to evaluate options for adjustments and, you know, whether they come back to you or whether they're made administratively by the city manager. We're looking for sort of a policy discussion on where you would make those adjustments.
Thank you. Hey, Ron, this is Christopher.
Yes, Christopher.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I really do like this layout much better than where we began, and I think it is always very important to let our... What is important to us and our vision for our city guide the way, and I think you've done that by doing this. And I think it helps not just our public, but also us as we make decisions. So, good job, thank you. I support it.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to accept the framework as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Bybee. Do we have a second?
I was going to read the motion, but does Mr. Anderson need to go in front of me? We were kind of tied.
Yeah, actually, Ms. Bybee, you can go with the motion, but I just wanted to compliment staff on this. Everyone from our city manager, assistant managers, all the leadership, I think you guys have done a fantastic job here. And one of the things that, as far as the changes and moving wastewater over to public safety, that's actually something that since I've been on council, and I've come to realize how critical that is to our public safety. And I've been joking about when you flush a toilet and it ends up back in your living room, you've got a safety issue. So thank you guys for the changes you made, and I do support this.
Okay, Ms. Bybee.
I move to accept the evaluative framework categorizing the core services identified in the staff report into functional areas of public safety, infrastructure and facilities, administration, and quality of life, as recommended by the city manager for the purpose of guiding any budgetary adjustments that may be necessary in fiscal year twenty-one.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Second, Mr. Anderson is the second. We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Just real quick, if I can.
Pardon me?
Real quick, if I can.
Okay, Donald.
I was just going to say, given what Paul said, I think where you got to, Doug, is you can't... I like where you're at, definitely. I like that we're doing this now before we're talking about actually making cuts, or at least having the conversation now and looking together as a team on how to prioritize this. It's not fun. Those aren't good conversations or fun conversations we've been having, but they're important ones to have now, and that way we're more prepared when the time comes. So, good job.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Doug, good job. Very good. Point two: Consideration and possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the city in an amount of approximately eight hundred seven thousand six hundred dollars. And who's going to do this? I got Dan. Oh, there's Dan, go ahead, Dan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm Dan Maron, your contracts and risk manager for the record. Item was nine point two and nine point three in your general business represent the annual renewal of insurance policies that cover events that might occur beyond the city's self-insurance limits. Starting with item nine point two, this is specific to the city, and this includes insurance policies that we purchased that cover property contents, automotive physical damage, general liability, auto liability, cyber liability, employee dishonesty, and our tenant user policies. As shown in the table used in the attachment for your staff report, cumulatively across all of the policies, we're seeing an increase of roughly fifteen percent in premium costs spread between our various coverages, with the heaviest impact seen in our policy for property coverage at twenty-six percent. Now, the relative good news we have is that in the time since your staff report was drafted, our brokers have done more work, spoke to the carriers, and we've reduced that number slightly. The line for property coverage has decreased to four hundred and ten thousand dollars, nine... Four hundred and ten thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars, resulting in a revised increase of only twenty-three percent for that line over fiscal twenty. This makes the total insurance premium for the city under this item of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars, or an increase across all policies of thirteen point six percent. So of course, you rightfully would be asking why we're seeing these increases. Well, first off, again, specific to property, the city's claim history over the last five years has been considerable. Our loss ratio is roughly twenty-four percent of our premium paid, which is towards the high end, and it just, as we've discussed in previous meetings, when we break things, they tend to be expensive things, just because of the business that we're in. Large, complex vehicles that require a good deal of upfitting. Second, our insured values of all the city's property, whether it's physical property like buildings or vehicles, replacement costs, that goes up with the economy. And so as those costs go up, our rates naturally go up. And then finally, this year, we are continuing to see just huge markup in the insurance markets through pricing adjustments due to their losses that they're seeing across the country with respect to both natural disasters and financial uncertainty. Anecdotally, just in my discussions with other risk managers and other agencies, I've seen quoted increases on their property lines in other agencies by as much as fifty percent this year, five-oh. And so we're relatively better off, obviously, at the twenty-plus percent that we're at. It isn't an easy pill to swallow, but here we are. We are not recommending any coverage changes for this coming fiscal year under these policies. And I'm pleased to try to answer any questions you might have. And additionally, on the call, we have our insurance brokers at USI, Brandon Lewis and Jennifer Fryer. They're available, they can stick their hands up if you've got any really deep dive questions. But otherwise, that covers everything under nine point two.
Any questions, comments, or questions? Okay, seeing none, we're looking for a motion.
Yeah, I can give the motion, Ron.
Okay, Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve the purchase of various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interest of the city in an amount of approximately eight hundred seven thousand six hundred dollars for the next policy period and authorize the contract and risk manager to execute agreements for those policies.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second.
I'll second that, but I need to ask, Mr. Maron, is that an adjusted motion that should be seven hundred ninety-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars?
Councilman Bybee, we're actually comfortable... Yeah, I understand the question, and I think for the sake of ease in leaving the agenda as is, leaving it at the higher amount is perfectly acceptable. We will obviously only pay what we were billed, and the reason we put approximately in the staff report is because our brokers are working full-time between now and July one, when the policies were new, to try and get those adjusted. And frankly, they can go up or they can go down, but we'd rather leave it just as written, so we've got some flexibility there.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that and comfortable with my second of Mr. Abbott's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, nine point three, this is you as well, Dan.
It is.
In possible approval to purchase various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interests of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in an amount of approximately four hundred thirty-seven dollars, six... Four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. Dan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Item nine point three is specific to the insurance policies that we carry for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility or TOMORF. Like the city coverage that we just detailed in item nine point two, the rate used to calculate the policy premium has gone up for the next renewal period. Even though we haven't had any claims at TOMORF in my history with the city with respect to this policy, we were originally quoted an increase of twenty-four percent year-to-year. We've continued to work to get this amount reduced, given the lack of losses at the facility, but generally, this increase, again, can be tied to the natural inflationary values of replacement equipment at TOMORF, combined with the economic factors that I just detailed in the previous item. Again, we've got relatively good news that today, the premium costs have decreased slightly since your last report was drafted. The line for property coverage decreased to three hundred sixty-four thousand one hundred, resulting in a revised eighteen percent increase for that line over fiscal twenty. So there, we've gone from twenty-four to eighteen percent in a matter of three weeks, thanks to our brokers that have been working this thing for us. The second insurance policy carried at TOMORF is a pollution liability policy that's renewed on a three-year cycle. The premium for pollution liability coverage of fifty-six thousand three hundred ten dollars reflects an increase of about six percent from the previous renewal that occurred in fiscal eighteen. This change fits within expected inflationary factors over the past three years and is not out of the norm at all. So with that, I'm pleased to get in to try to answer any questions, and again, our brokers are standing by if you have questions for them.
Questions or comments? Mr. Lawson.
Dan, does this reflect the Reno's portion, or is this the entire premium?
This is the entire premium. As the operating entity for TOMORF, we take on the entire cost, but then bill it back per the terms of the agreement. So what actually affects the City of Sparks is the two-third, one-third generally.
Right. We'll get sixty-five percent roughly back.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the purchase of various commercial insurance policies to protect the financial interest of Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility in the amount of approximately four hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars for the next policy periods and authorize the contracts and risk... Contracts and risk manager to execute agreement of those policies.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second.
Second.
Mr. Lawson? Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. We move to nine point four: Consideration, discussion, and possible approval to purchase stop-loss insurance from Voya Financial for the city's self-funded group health plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one in an amount of four hundred eighty thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars. Mindy, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. While keeping in the theme of insurance, this agenda item is to authorize the city manager to purchase the stop-loss insurance for our group health plan. Stop-loss insurance protects the city from any catastrophic claims against the group health. It's important to note that this doesn't affect the benefits anyway, it just protects the city's viability. Just a quick review on what self-funded means and how the stop-loss insurance works. So a self-funded plan means the city pays the group health fund claims as they come in. An employee, a dependent, or retiree goes to the doctor, bill comes in, the city pays the claim. How stop-loss gets involved is once the bills for any condition reach three hundred thousand dollars, that the stop-loss insurance starts paying. Three hundred thousand is our current threshold under our current policy. There isn't an exception to this, and those are called lasers. But what is a laser? At the beginning of the policy year, the insurance company identifies individuals with certain conditions and says they will cover those claims, but at a higher threshold. The city currently has two lasers for one point three million dollars. To buy this insurance, the city staff worked with LP Insurance Brokers. LP opened the bid to various insurance carriers. Thirteen companies were asked to bid, eleven chose not to quote, one did not give a viable option, and then our current carrier, Voya, submitted three different options for us to choose from. And all three of these options, the lasers are exactly the same. There are four different conditions for a total of one point six million dollars. And option one, we can keep the same coverage, the same threshold, three hundred thousand dollars, but the premium would go up fifteen percent or seventy-three thousand dollars. And option two, we can increase the stop-hole threshold to three hundred and twenty-five thousand from three hundred thousand. The premium would go up three point nine percent or eighteen thousand dollars. This option gives the city slightly more risk, but keeps the premium in a manageable state. Option three would be to increase the stop-loss threshold to three fifty from three hundred thousand, so increasing the risk the city would take by fifty thousand per claim, but it also decreased the premium by seven point seven percent. City staff recommends option two, which is increasing the threshold from three hundred thousand to three hundred twenty-five. This is considered an acceptable risk for two reasons. The city has had five claims that have reached the stop-loss in the last three years, or one point seven a year. And if the city has two claims next year that reach the threshold, the group health plan would be in the same position if we were to keep the current plan. If not, the city would spend less money on stop-loss. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion? Still looking for a motion, Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the purchase of stop-loss insurance with Voya Financial for the city's self-funded group health plan program for fiscal year twenty-one in the amount of four hundred eighty thousand one hundred fifty-nine dollars and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second.
Second.
Who's that?
Ed.
Ed, okay, we have a motion and any further discussion? Ed? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I think Christopher is gone. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to 9.5. This is yours, Mindy. Presentation, discussion and possible approval to purchase group life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance with standard life insurance for an annual amount of $72,500 in fiscal year '21, '22 and '23 with a total expense of $217,500. Mindy?
All right, so Mindy Falk, Human Resources Director. This is your final insurance agenda item for the day, and this one is for the life insurance and accidental death. What is proposed is the same benefit as the city currently offers, which is $25,000 per active employee, $2,500 for dependents and $10,000 for retirees. Again, LP put this insurance product out to bed. Two companies responded, the Metro and Standard Life. The Metro is the city's current carrier and Standard Life is our former carrier. Standard's bid was the most competitive, excuse me. They offered a three-year term. It's a 17.57% reduction and about $15,000 less per year. The city has used Standard in the past and has not had any customer service issues. So with that, staff recommends the option of Standard Life, and I can answer any questions.
All right, questions or comments? Seeing none? Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve participation in an agreement with Standard Life Insurance and authorize the city manager to execute policy documents.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second?
I'll second it. Abbott?
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Abbott. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mindy. For the 9.6, consideration, discussion and possible approval of a professional services contract, AC-5674 with West Coast Code Consultants in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for permit planning. That's going to be Mark? Mark, you're muted. You can do it.
Here we go. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. For the record, Mark Miranda, building official, Sparks Billion Safety. With your permission, Mayor, I would like to make one presentation for the next three general business items.
Okay, we'll vote on them separately, but go ahead.
Yeah, you can vote on them, but I just thought I'd do one presentation if that's all right.
That's fine.
So to provide timely building permit and inspection services to the development community, the building division has used third-party plan checking and inspection services to supplement the city staff. Currently, we provide these services to the city. The proposed contracts would provide the building division's continued use of these services through June 30, 2021. The city has continued to utilize contract plan review services, both to maintain staffing flexibility and to gain access to plan examiners with the specialized experience needed for review of more complex plans like multifamily residential buildings and schools. All three of these consultants have submitted letters of proposal to continue providing the city of Sparks with building permit, plan review and inspection services. Staff has reviewed these proposals and find these terms acceptable. If the city council approves, these contracts would be used on an as-needed basis only. So that concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments on 9, 6, 7 and 8? Okay, seeing none? We're looking for a motion for 9.6? Okay, Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve the professional services contract AC-5674 with West Coast Code Consultant, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for building permit, plan review and inspection services.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, 9.7, looking for a motion?
Are you ready?
I'll make it.
I'll give it a shot if you want. I move to approve the professional services contract AC-5672 with Bureau Beritas in the amount not to exceed $150,000 for contract labor to provide building inspection services during fiscal year '21.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second? Mr. Anderson?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, looking for a motion for 9.8?
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the professional services contract AC-5673 with Premier Inspection Services in the amount not to exceed $150,000 for contract labor to provide building inspection services for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second? Mr. Anderson? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 9.9. Consideration of possible approval of an expenditure of $359,501 to purchase a Rapid View Eye-Back Camera Van and all associated equipment from Jack Dahini Companies Incorporated as part of the FY 2020 Storm Drain CIP, utilizing a joint bid from Sourcewell, a purchasing consortium contract 122017-RVL. Ron Corman?
Good afternoon, Mayor Smith, members of the council. Ron Corman, your Public Works Manager. Before you today, to present for your possible consideration is an expenditure of $359,501 to purchase a TV camera van. I will be bringing something up on the screen here. If I can. If I can do this, there it is. So, can you see that, Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Okay. So, give you a little bit of background in the sewer collection system maintenance. We have been utilizing vans similar to this for many years now to put cameras into our sewer system and look into the sewer system to determine several things. One of which is the current condition of those pipelines. If those pipelines are showing excessive wear or damage, then we work with our Capitol Projects folks to, you know, start thinking about scheduling in replacement. And more recently, we have used this, what we call a pipeline assessment program to determine if we need to get into the pipes and do the cleaning. In years past, we used to just go out and clean, you know, start at one end of the city and clean all the pipes. And when we got to the other end of the city, we would, you know, start over again. And so by utilizing this assessment program, we're able to save the wear and tear on the pipeline system as well as the wear and tear on the equipment that we use to clean those pipes. So over the years, we have found this to be very successful. And what we would like to do is to build a data-backed preventative maintenance program for our storm drain system and follow along the same model that we've used in the sewer collection system. And so this vehicle, if you take a look, one of the things that's inside is the operator's post. And this gentleman is on the left screen of his monitor. He's looking at the inside of the pipe. And then on the right screen, it's kind of showing where he is on the map in the city of Sparks. And so all that data can be logged and then reviewed. And then we can make determinations. We can generate a work order and then send staff out with a cleaning truck to do that cleaning. So we would be purchasing this vehicle under a joint agreement, as you mentioned, through Sourcewell. That is a national purchasing consortium. We find that we get very good pricing. And through this national purchasing consortium, and we are able to specify the equipment that we want without having to go through the bid process, the formal bid process, and be able to purchase this vehicle. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments?
Just, Mr. Mayor, Ed Lawson?
Yes.
Just to drive home the point of restricted and non-restricted funds, this is one of those restricted funds. This is what you pay on your bill. It's a storm drain fee of about $5.50 every quarter. And that's what this money is used to be spent on.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve the purchase of the Rapid View Eye-Back Camera Van from John Jack Dany, is it Dahini? Companies in the amount of $359,501.48.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second?
Forget the 48 cents.
I know. Ms. Bybee?
All right, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Okay. 910, consideration, discussion and possible approval of an interlocal agreement AC-5677 for participation in Washoe County Regional Communication P25 System for Public Safety Radio Communications. Brandon, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Brandon Sandall, Assistant City Attorney. The item before you here is a proposed in our local agreement among about a little over 15 regional entities within the Truckee Meadows. And it's for the city's participation in the Washoe County Regional Communications P25 system. That's another way of saying for the technical upgrade of our regional first responder radio communication system. So a little background, since the late 90s and continuing through today, regional partners across the Truckee Meadows, that's us, City Arena, Washoe County, the school district, Truckee Meadows Fire, the Airport Authority, TUM Law, a handful of federal agencies. We've all communicated between each other using a single shared trumped radio communication system. It's called the 800 megahertz EDAX system. So that's the system that our first responders use to communicate with their counterparts and other government entities. And it enables regional response in events such as, you know, fire responses, cross-jurisdictional law enforcement issues, anything that requires a regional response. So the reason we're here is the 800 megahertz EDAX system goes back to the 1980s and is now obsolete. We're basically running on VHS in the digital world. So the manufacturer, GE, has stopped providing support. There's no more software updates. So because the system is becoming obsolete, the regional partners, about two years ago, began discussing the need to upgrade the system just to make sure that we maintain a fully functional communication system for our first responders. So first, the state through NDOT began the statewide upgrade of what's called the Nevada Shared Radio System. That's statewide. We're not a party to that. We've been a party to the regional agreement with Washoe County. So the Nevada Shared Radio System has engaged with Harris Communications for that. And now Washoe County is proposing to pay the upfront cost for the regional infrastructure on our regional system. So under the interlocal, Washoe County will pay upfront, primarily using bonds. And each participating agency would be responsible for its proportionate share of those infrastructure costs. We have about, it's based on each entity's radio counts. So we have about 490 radios out of 5,400. That's about 9%. So we would be responsible for 9% of the technical upgrade. So overall, the P25 interlocal, the system governance is similar to the existing governance system in the 800 megahertz system. It's governed by a joint operating committee. Kennedy gets one representative. And there's a technical advisory committee to make recommendations to the joint operating committee. So as far as operations and governance, there wouldn't be any significant changes. So the city's share of the roughly 15.6 million in infrastructure costs is estimated to be And that's to be paid in annual installments over 15 years. Initial payments would include a 10% bond reserve fund, but that's anticipated to pay off the remainder of the of what's owed under the bonds at the end of the term. There are some other costs associated with this because you have to upgrade the radios as well as the system infrastructure. So right now, almost all of the city's current radios are P25 compliant. The way I, what I understand, the main exception is the police department's motorcycles. They are not P25 compliant. But that's a pretty small proportion of our existing radios. Even though our current radios are compliant, once the system's built, all of our radios will need either a firmware update, and that costs some money, or we will need to replace those radios. Chief Kroll and Chief Reed are both working with the county right now on exact costs right now. But our current estimates look like it's about $650,000 if we were to do the firmware update on all of our radios. Alternatively, if we were just to replace all of the radios, the estimate right now is about $1.3 million. Again, that's over a period of probably about four years. Any replacement radios under the contract, we have about a 50%, it's actually over a 50% discount through Harris for any radios that are purchased by 2024. So that'll just give you a ballpark on what we're looking, in addition to what the infrastructure costs are that are asked under the interlocal. Wanted to make sure the council knew about what we're looking at, you know, $650 to $1.15 million over the next roughly four years. So for the infrastructure costs here under the interlocal, the annual payment would be made from the city's general obligation debt service fund. That's via an annual transfer from the general fund. That has been rooted in the approved fiscal year '21 budget in anticipation of the first installment. With that, the city staff recommends approval of the interlocal to ensure that our first responders continue to have their usual communications capabilities. Chief Kroll, Chief Reed, Jeff Cronk and myself are available to answer any questions.
Okay, questions or comments?
I have a question.
Ms. Bybee?
Yeah, I'm looking in the staff report here, and it's saying that the entire infrastructure and site development of the P25 upgrade is going to take five years.
Chief Reed, do you have any, do you have any additional information on that? I, I think the main build out is going to be over about two or three years, but, um, but I don't, I don't have details on the exact timeline or planned timeline.
Well, can we get back to, uh, Councilman?
Yeah. Yeah, you could get back to me. I guess, um, has, so are we using? So none of the system is active right now. We have P twenty-five compliant radios right now, but is any of the system operational? Or does this whole, this whole system needs to be, um, the upgrade needs to happen before you have the full capability of the P twenty-fives with this?
Yeah. None of the system has been built yet. Uh, all of the participating agencies are, are either have recently brought this to their governing boards or councils or are doing it right now as we are. Um, I, the bonding is not, uh, is not through, through Washoe County yet. So, so nothing has been started on this yet.
Okay, just curious to.
As for the P. The P twenty-five.
Conversations for a couple of years. I mean, I think when I first came on council, we were talking about the P twenty-five and our radios and replacing. We replaced a bunch of radios to make them compliant with P twenty-five. Just seems like it's kind of been a very long, long process.
Not, not to get down too far into a rabbit hole, there, there were a lot of arguments on the interlocal. Um, there were some changes to the governance structure that, that, uh, staff didn't like and, and not just within the city of Sparks, but there, there were some arguments about the governance structure. And being that the J O S D, the Joint Operating Committee only meets quarterly, it took a while for everybody to get on board.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Hey, any other questions? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, actually, my, my question was exactly along the lines of Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Bybee. Um, it does say right here that it's going to take approximately five years to implement. We're going to be paying it off in fifteen years and I don't recall hearing the system that we're on now. How long have we been on that one?
Thirty. It's, it started in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay. So we will have paid everything off and haven't implemented before we have to change it out again. Okay.
I don't, I don't think that five-year figure is for it to be operational. I think that's final finishing touches. Um, we, I, Chief Reed, if you have anything on that, if not, I can follow up with the council on, on exact details on the timeline.
Can you bring me up? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, yeah, you're, you're correct on the five years. It should be up and running by that time with, you know, all the kinks worked out. The, the two-year build out is to build that infrastructure. And then, you know, dialing it in after that. But no, it is not, the P twenty-five is not up and running at this time. This is just the basic infrastructure and they did the first part of it down in Southern Nevada, um, last year. Thanks, chief. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yep.
Mr. Lawson.
So, um, in this, Chief Reed, you probably know this, are, are you going to have the crossbanding in the interim before the five years or is it going to be just a switch over at five years, you're on P twenty-five?
I, I believe it'll be a switch over. It'll just be from one system to the next.
Okay, so we're, we still, as in the next five years, as we buy radios, we can still buy the compliant radios and there should be a good percentage of what we already have that's compliant as it is right now. So, it's a thousand that Brandon was saying would be worst case scenario. Well, worst case scenario would be the one point two, where we'd have to replace every radio, which I don't see that happening. But, uh, so the, but it's going to be a one, one day switch over is what it's going to amount to.
Well, ye- yes, let's cross our fingers on that one day thing. But yes, all the radios that PD and Fire do have, and if we get back to Ms. Bybee's question, yes, we did buy new ones in, I believe it was twenty fifteen or so. And yeah, those are all the P twenty-five compliant at that time. So yeah, everything we're buying now is all compliant. It's just going to be that last piece. And hopefully it's just that, you know, firmware, computer update to upgrade them, everything. Chief Crawl, do you want to jump in here?
Yes, sir, just to add a little bit of information, uh, for the record, uh, Mayor Smith, members of council, Pete Crawl, your police chief. Uh, what Mr. Sandel says is, is essentially correct. Uh, but with a little bit more detail, we have some radios, uh, in our vehicles and on our motorcycles that are called mobile radios. Uh, we have been replacing those over time as they have aged out. They are not P twenty-five compliant and would not work on that radio system when it is up and running. Uh, so we have been replacing those through, as we replace vehicles in our fleet, we replace those with a newer radio. So the last time I had numbers on those radios, um, we had thirty-one that needed to be replaced. Uh, that was about a year ago, so I would need a new list of numbers on those to provide an accurate dollar amount. Relative to that, the other type of radio that we carry, hopefully as you can see in the screen, is an HT or, or, or what's referred to in the, in the vernacular as a, as a, uh, as a portable radio versus the mobile in the car. All of the HTs that we have purchased are P twenty-five capable. However, some of them are purchased without some of the firmware or software that's needed to make them operational. The way the system will be replaced, as it's been explained to me, is the EDAX system will maintain functionality until the P twenty-five is fully up and running for all the agencies in the agreement, um, for its use. Now, some of the design and build out that is occurring are additional cell sites or, or tower sites to fix holes in the radio system that existed when it was first put into place and have not been replaced. For example, there are some large portions of the, of, uh, the Wingfield Springs area where we have some radio difficulty. Golden Eagle Park is one of them. Um, there are some other specific areas where we have some difficulties. The new cell sites, uh, or tower sites as they're built will, will fix those holes that essentially were not discovered until growth moved us into them.
Makes sense. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion.
All right, I'll give it a shot.
Okay, Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement AC five six seven seven for participation in the Washoe County Regional Communications P twenty-five system for public safety radio communications, including payment to Washoe County for the city of Sparks promotional share, proportional share of P twenty-five communications and infrastructure development. Costs currently estimated at one million, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars will be financed over fifteen years at approximately a hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars annually.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Abbott, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just as an aside, I did a little math, that's about one point four percent interest over fifteen years. That's a good deal.
Not bad. That's not bad. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to nine eleven. Consideration, discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC five six seven one between the city of Sparks and the Sun Valley General Improvement District for a grant of right of way to allow the Sun Valley General Improvement District to install, operate and maintain its distribution center within the city's roadways that are located within the Five Bridges Development. Brandon.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're stuck with me for one more. Um, so a little background on why we're doing this. Right now, Tum Law is the sole provider of water services within the city. So the city has a right-of-way agreement with Tum Law, allowing Tum Law to install and operate its water distribution system within city roadways. That governs, uh, you know, uh, requirements that Tum Law has to abide by, uh, construction standards, things like that. So this item involves the planned Five Bridges Development, um, that is located in Sparks city limits, but is right next door to CivGid property. So the property owner, uh, requested that CivGid, rather than Tum Law, provide water services to its planned development site, uh, given the proximity to the existing, uh, CivGid system and the topography of the site. Um, so before coming to the city, uh, Tum Law did approve an amendment to its wholesale water, uh, supply territory to allow CivGid to actually provide water service, uh, water services to the Five Bridges property. Um, that way CivGid wouldn't be encroaching on Tum Law's service territory. Uh, and CivGid annexed the property for water services. So the issue that remained there is the city doesn't have a right-of-way agreement with CivGid like it does with Tum Law. So, once those actions were done, city staff and CivGid staff negotiated the term of the right-of-way agreement for you. Um, it was modeled after the Tum Law agreement to make sure that, um, you know, CivGid has the same rights and responsibilities that, uh, Tum Law does. Um, it contains the same requirements of Tum Law, including the payment of right-of-way toll fees, um, location requirements, notice and permitting requirements, construction standards, things like that. There are two notable exceptions between this agreement and the Tum Law agreement. Um, the first is the geographical scope. The CivGid agreement only applies to the Five Bridges Development and the adjacent section of Highland Ranch Parkway. Uh, that's to clarify that CivGid, um, can't expand further into Sparks slash Tum Law territory and Tum Law remains the water provider for all the other locations in the city. Uh, second, because CivGid did the partial annexation for water services only, um, clarified in there that the city is providing all the other government, uh, services. The city has the sole right to levy and collect general taxes, including property taxes. Um, we just thought that a decade down the road, someone might see this and, you know, think, hey, why aren't we issuing property taxes there? So we wanted to clarify that upfront. So, uh, recently, the city council affirmed to the planning commission's issuance of a conditional use permit at Five Bridges property, uh, for hillside development and approved a tentative map for the subdivision of the property. And the CivGid Board of Trustees voted unanimously to approve the right-of-way agreement at its May fourteenth, uh, public meeting. And city staff recommends approval of this right-of-way agreement.
Okay, questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Oh. I think the motion, uh, move to approve right-of-way agreement AC five six seven one between the city of Sparks and Sun Valley General Improvement District to allow CivGid to install, operate, maintain its water distribution system within city roadways that will be located within the Five Bridges Development, APN zero eight three dash zero one one dash one five in the adjacent section of Highland Ranch Parkway, subject to the requirements placed on CivGid within the agreement.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, nine twelve, nine point one two. Consideration, discussion and possible adoption of resolution R dash three three six five, approving the sale by the city of Sparks to LCG Waterfront LLC of a parcel four hundred and forty-six square feet in size and a parcel thirteen hundred and twenty-five square feet in size located within the Marina Village Plan Development. John, welcome.
Mayor, city council members, it's all nice to see everybody today. Um, this item is just a cleanup item, um, with regards to the, the relocation of the path, um, over on the, the east side of the Marina. I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. Um, where the, where the property is located is, is here, um, just to the west of Harbor Cove and to the south of East Lincoln Way. Um, this is an aerial photo, um, or a shot, uh, of the path being relocated. And again, the reason why the path needs to be relocated is, is here where the Sparks Marina Bar is, has, um, expanded as well as the pool deck, um, up here at the Marina Apartments. Um, there are just a couple, um, there's four parcels or remnants that were created with the, um, with the new path. Well. Okay, I'm sorry. I got to stop, stop my share. I apologize. Can everybody see the aerial?
Yep.
Okay. Um, as I indicated, um, I'll just, I'll let you grab some real quick here. With the expansion of the Sparks Marina Bar, as well as the pool deck up here at the Marina, um, the, the path had to be relocated further to the, to the west, uh, through the, through this section right here. I'm going to bring up another exhibit real quick. Hey, there are two parcels that are owned by the city of Sparks. Um, the, the one in blue and the one in Cyan are, are owned by the city of Sparks. So that's parcel one and parcel three. And then there's a small sliver, uh, of green that sits right here, as well as this large area, um, of orange. That, that is owned by, that is owned by, um, LCG Waterfront, uh, LLC. Um, with respect to, um, being able to transfer this property, there's an NRS that, that allows, um, the, the sale of this property, if a public facility was constructed and that the pathway is a public facility. Um, with regards to, um, the, um, the property that we would exchange in lieu of, of what LCG Waterfront would exchange, we're seeing a, a market value increase of approximately thirty-three thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. So, um, we're, we're, we're seeing a, a benefit, um, with exchanging these properties. With that, I'd be hap- oh, I do want to mention one thing. Um, with regards to the resolution, um, should you approve the resolution here today, it will, uh, allow the officer or the city manager to sign the quit claim deed um, and, and be able to, uh, start the process of, of getting the, the parcel lines, um, relocated. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, any questions or comments? With it, what, seeing none, looking for a motion. Ms. Bybee?
No, I'll let Mr. Anderson, that's his word.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Yeah, and it's, it's looking great down there. Lot of, lot of exciting things and seeing thousands of people walking along there is exciting. So I'll make the motion, I move to adopt resolution R three three six five, approving the sale by the city of Sparks to LCG Waterfront LLC, parcel of four hundred and forty-six point three eight square feet in size and parcel thirteen hundred and twenty-five point zero six square feet in size located within the city of Sparks.
Okay, we have a motion looking for a second. Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that with the comment that I cannot wait until they open. So I think we're all waiting for the Sparks Water Bar and, um, their, their famous, uh, cocktails and, uh, eating out, eating outside, which during this COVID, it is like an amazing location and we're just super excited. So then it's finally, uh, finally coming to fruition.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, John.
Welcome.
Nine fourteen. Consideration, discussion of possible acceptance of an offer to settle Fishman v Mercer, case number three nineteen dash CB dash zero zero two nine two. Allison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, city council. For the record, I'm Assistant City Attorney Allison McCormick. And I'm here before you asking you to consider whether to accept or reject an offer to settle Fishman versus Mercer for fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this case was filed in the US District Court for the District of Nevada. Uh, this case was filed in the U.S. District Court for the District of Nevada against both the city and one of our former police officers, Joe Mercer. Uh, the city has since been dismissed, but the claims against Officer Mercer remain. Those claims are essentially that Officer Mercer arrested the plaintiff, Zaire Fishman, without probable cause and that Officer Mercer's interrogation of the victim was overly suggestive. Uh, as I said, the claims against the city were dismissed, uh, but because Officer Mercer was acting in his scope of employment at the time, uh, the city would be obligated to pay any settlement or judgment that was found against him in this case. Uh, the plaintiff has offered to settle the case for $55,000. There is a letter from the plaintiff's attorney explaining their position, uh, attached to the staff report, and the city council may accept or reject the settlement offer. If city council accepts the offer, staff would then negotiate terms of a written settlement agreement uh, with the primary term being the settlement amount of $55,000. Uh, if the city council rejects this offer, we would proceed with the litigation and perhaps other settlement discussions down the road. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lawson.
I move to reject the offer to settle with Fishman versus Mercer the matter for $55,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second their motion.
Second from Ms. Bybee. Um, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Okay, nine fifteen is the first reading. Lisa?
Mr. Mayor, if you do not mind, what I'd like to do is combine nine fifteen and nine sixteen and go ahead and read both of those first readings together. Uh, and then I'm happy to go over the public hearing, uh, for both of those items at the same time.
Okay.
Perfect. So item number nine point one five is the first reading of bill number two seven seven four, amending Sparks Municipal Code chapters five point two two, five point two four, and five point two eight to repeal requirements that gaming employees and bartenders obtain work permits and providing other matters properly related thereto. And item number nine point one six is the first reading of bill number two seven seven five, amending Title V of the Sparks Municipal Code to create a temporary business license, CA dash five dash one nine. Now, a public hearing will be held for both of these bills, number two seven seven four and two seven seven five, and will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty at 2:00 P.M. That meeting will be held virtually via Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Public hearing and action items unrelated to planning and zoning. Ten point one. Consideration of possible approval of the five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 2020 through 2024 and annual action plan for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And I think this is Doug again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Jim.
Planning manager. Good memory. I mean, yes, as you identify, here to present on this item, I'm going to share my screen for my presentation. Did that work, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
As you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, this item is, uh, requesting the city council approve the, to the HUD, the U.S. Department of Urban, of Housing and Urban Development, the city's five-year consolidated plan, including an updated citizen participation plan for the federal fiscal years of 2020 through 2024. This will also include the annual action plan for the upcoming fiscal year of 2020. What does the annual action plan include? Well, some of the council, uh, is often involved in many of these, these components that the annual action plan and the, uh, um, that the annual action plan identifies for how the City of Sparks will spend its allotment of $684,000 of community development block grant money. One of those is Silver State Fair Housing in the amount of $25,000. The Continuum of Care, also known as the COC, in the amount of $19,000. City Staffing, George Graham, uh, hundred, uh, allocating money to that in the amount of $154,000. And then the homeless shelter, known as the Community Assistance Center, in the amount of $90,000 that we ultimately send over to, to Reno. Um, housing rehabilitation, Mayor Smith, you've, you've been involved in some of that. You, you run that meeting when we, uh, identify certain loans to give to citizens of Sparks. And that's as well as the deferred loan program. Uh, Mayor Smith, you, you oversee that, that program that we tended to have at City Hall with prior to COVID. We also operate the emergency repair grant. And then more recently, Amber Sosa presented the pedestrian improvement plan that, uh, identified areas in, um, Councilman Abbot's ward where we would be doing curb gutter sidewalk and some street repair, utilizing CDBG money. Back on, uh, a few council meetings ago, we continued this item to the June twenty-second meeting to today to provide the city staff time to identify possible expenditures of CDBG funding to prevent, to prepare and prevent and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. One of those considerations staff is going to prepare for today was to reduce funding to the, uh, pedestrian improvement plan and potentially reallocate that money for COVID expenses. But I don't believe we need to do that now. As we identified earlier, uh, the, the city of Sparks has received a substantial amount of money from the state to cover those COVID costs. And given that pass-through of money, staff now recommends leaving, uh, the proposal in the annual action plan completely alone and moving forward as we have outlined in the staff report. So the motion that staff is asking of the city council is that we recommend the city council approve the submittal of the five-year consolidated plan for federal fiscal years 2020 through 2024 and the fiscal year 2020 annual action plan, AAP, as presented to you for fiscal year 2020 to HUD. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Before we do any, um, more discussion, I'll, I'll open up the public comment period. This is a public comment item. Lisa, is there anybody in the queue?
If there is anybody that wishes to speak on this item, please press star nine from your telephone or raise your hand via the Zoom app. And we'll give them just a minute, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And I'm showing none.
Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the, uh, council for action. Uh, questions or comments for, from Jim? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
Um, I move to approve the fiscal year consolidated plan for fiscal years 2020 to 2024 and the annual action plan for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021 for community development block grant and Washoe County Home Consortium funding for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks, Jim. Okay, we'll move on to another public hearing item, ten point two. Consideration of possible approval of resolution R-3364, authorizing Financial Services Department to establish an inter-fund loan to the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Fund and/or the Community Development Block Grant Fund. And Debbie, welcome.
Hi.
We haven't seen you in a while.
No, I don't get before you very often. It's about once a year. And, and, uh, good afternoon to you, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council. I am Debbie Kinder, your compliance accounting manager. And normally, at this once-of-a-year time, I would be asking you for two inter-fund loan resolutions to be approved, one for the grants, that's the one before you today, and one for a potential negative cash coverage in the general fund. But in preparing for the COVID impacts to the reduced general fund revenues, it's possible that we're going to transfer a million dollars from the motor vehicle fund this year, fiscal '20, and that we will make another transfer possibly in fiscal '21. And after taking those two transfers into consideration, we're just not comfortable in determining that a third loan to avoid a negative cash situation is going to be economically viable for the motor vehicle fund. Um, but due to the efforts to support the general fund's condition, such as the transfer from the redevelopment agency that was made, the potential transfers from the motor vehicle fund, and other cost-saving efforts that are underway, I am able to present the report today before you um, with some reasonable assurance that the general fund can support a short-term inter-fund loan to the three grant funds that we have. Therefore, I'm asking you to authorize the Financial Services Department to establish an inter-fund loan from the general fund to the grant funds as they need them during fiscal year '21. Nevada statutes requires that we hold a public hearing and that council approval is obtained before an inter-fund loan is made, and they consider that any periods of negative cash constitute an inter-fund loan. Our grant funds are reimbursement-type grants, and therefore, we often experience periods of negative cash within those funds. But by holding this public hearing and by approving resolution number three three six four today, then we stand a good chance of being within an arrest requirements and in compliance with Nevada law. Our grant staff accountant is going to spend some additional time this year as well. He's going to try and minimize the amount of time that our cash is negative, so he'll file the claims as quickly as possible. So between the increased support to the general fund that I mentioned and an increased effort to reduce our negative cash, I may still do advise you that we anticipate that an interest-free loan of up to $500,000 for a period of 30 days or less from the general fund's available non-restricted assets will not compromise the economic viability of the general fund during fiscal year '21. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you or the public might have at this time.
Okay, what I'll do is, this is a public comment, our public hearing item, so I'll open up public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time?
And I will just remind the public, if you do wish to speak, to press star nine from your telephone or, uh, raise your hand from your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Any questions or comments for, for Debbie? Seeing none, looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve resolution number three three six four, authorizing Financial Services Department to establish an inter-local loan to the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Fund and/or the Community Development Block Grant, um, Grant Fund and/or Sparks Grants and Donations Fund from the general fund as needed during fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
We have a second from Ms. Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Okay, we'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time?
And as a reminder, at this time, press star nine on your telephone to indicate you would like to, uh, leave a public comment or raise your hand via Zoom.
Seeing none?
Showing none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council. Comments from the mayor, city council, or city manager?
Um, I have one.
Ms. Bybee?
Um, yeah, I would just like to let the, uh, let the council know, but the community know, there's going to be a town hall this evening from five to seven o'clock, and it is a virtual town hall on community policing in northern Nevada, talking about the Gwynne Study and, um, on policing in, uh, northern Nevada. And town hall is open to anyone who wants to go on to, uh, Facebook Live. It'll be on Facebook and Twitter. So, uh, should be a good conversation with a lot of different, uh, community members and representatives that, um, from our police, local law enforcement, and community leaders and people who served on that task force. And we did have Mayor Martini served on that, as well as Senator Julia Ratty, uh, from Sparks, uh, as well as Brian Allen, who's obviously retired, but, uh, could be a, should be a good and interesting conversation if anyone's interested to tune in.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned.
Okay, don't go anywhere. Want to call to order the, uh, Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of June twenty-second, 2020, with a roll call?
Uh, Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Dare is absent, Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Abbott?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Krutz?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, items free, public comment.
If anybody, uh, is desiring to leave public comment at this time, press star nine on your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, item four point one, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve, Abbott.
I have a motion to approve by Agency Member Abbott. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and a second by Agency Member Anderson. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five point one, minutes. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of May twenty-sixth, 2020. Do I have any corrections, additions, or a motion to approve the minutes?
Lawson moved to approve.
Okay, Agency Member Lawson, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second, Smith.
Uh, Agency Member Smith, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item six point one, business items. Consideration, possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of May thirteenth, 2020 through June ninth, 2020. Um, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Approve that.
Okay, Agents, Agency Member Anderson, motion to approve. Uh, Agency Member Abbott, was that a second?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven point one, comments from the public. Do we have any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to make a public comment at this time, please press star nine on your telephone or raise your hand via your Zoom app, and I'll give everybody just a minute. And I'm showing none, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seven point two, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any comments? Okay, hearing none, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you.